Could we have everyone please rise for the flag and remain standing.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation under God,
Salamaka City Central School District acknowledges the homeland of the Ananda Waka, the people of the Great Hill. The Seneca people on whose ancestral and modern day land Salamaka School District now stands and whose water we enjoy. We stand with all indigenous peoples and their resolve to remain connected to their land. While we cannot undo what has been done, it is the goal of the Salamaka City Central School District to recognize the history and make improvements that will benefit the next seven generations of indigenous students. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Yes, we had a couple changes. We have deleted or postponed the next budget presentation at our next meeting. We added the Odyssey that might travel to the consent agenda five C. We added the senior class 2023 field trip to Cedar Point. We added financial items in the consent agenda, which is five F. And we added some backup paperwork for a new employee, Eric Miller, in personnel action item.
Then with that, we need a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Carrie, second by Dale. Any questions? All in favor?
I.
Both. Stand motion here. Your presentation, your second grade presentation.
You have doing. Yeah, there we go.
Second grade.
Second grade, you're up.
Thank you to the board for letting me come to the Senate. I teach second grade. I'm here on behalf of all the second graders being, I have some second graders here tonight and their families. So I have Parker Scott, if you could stand up. And Ariana and. Brady. And. Jackson. These are one of the second graders that participated in our March Madness this year. We had 24 in total, but these guys made it pretty far into the competition, so we invited them to come along. To get see some of the things that they did. We had gotten away from doing March Madness because of different reasons, COVID, whatever. But we really felt strongly about bringing it back. And we're glad that we did because the kids had a great time. The teachers had a great time. It really created excitement within our building for a few weeks in March. We modeled it after March Madness for basketball, so it had a basketball theme. We had Sweet Sixteen, Elite Eight, Final Four, all of that. We created a bracket that we put out in the hallway by the art room and we chose that location because all of a sudden go to art, they could all see it. The kids could follow along how their friends are doing, maybe how they're doing. It created a buzz with even the lower grade. First grade could or did get excited about maybe being part of that next year. So it was pretty good to see. We had old teachers come to the students and to tell them how proud they are of them. They tracked how far they went. So it was pretty, a pretty good visual for everybody from school. So here are your 2023 March Madness contestants. Each teacher nominated for students from their class to be, to take part in this. For round one, it was basically an individual round where students had to do a worksheet. We just picked the top sixteen to move on. If there was a tie, we would look at the numbers and see, you know, if they got it done in sixteen minutes and the other one got it done in eighteen minutes, then the other one went further. So the first round here is an individual effort. By students. So moving on. Here are your Sweet Sixteen. This round was exactly the same as the round before. They did an individual task. It was graded and then the top eight moved on. So this is your Elite Eight here. And then she really competition changed. All of second, all the second graders came to the cafeteria and we all cheered on the eight contestants. And they would go, they went head to head on this round. So when they went head to head, they had, they had to answer the questions correctly. And if they got it right, they gave, they had another adult and they would give that adult a thumbs up. So if they were correct, they give a thumbs up. If they thought they were correct, they give a thumbs up to the adult and the adult would check. If it was right, the adult would put their hand up and if it was wrong, the adult would say, please try again. So they had multiple, if they, if they both got it wrong, they had multiple opportunities to get it right. During this part of the competition, there was a lot of pressure and the kids really rose to the occasion. They did great. They all had great sportsmanship. They all shook hands afterwards. So it was really good to see the sportsmanship that they displayed. So moving on, from Elite Eight would be the Final Four. And those were the four that I had indicated earlier. So the final four are Alan, Jackson, Parker, and Brady. Each level, the questions got more difficult, more challenging for them. And they really had to use their brain power and become mathematicians to answer the question. And they did really well. And we had a couple instances where someone was ahead and then the other person came from behind and so they didn't give up. And it was good to see. So we have our championship round. So the two students have made it to the championship round for Parker and Brady. And I do want to tell this story. I had one of the teachers, one of their classes out on the playground. And there was like, you know, a group of kids and she was like, no longer go, we should investigate and she's like, what's going on? And they're like, well, we're giving someone, so we're giving them some problems to do. We gotta get them ready. It was just really exciting. It's exciting to see kids getting excited about math and, and it, we made it, turned it into a fun thing and they did a great job. So here is Parker Brady. They are ready to start their round. We have all the second grade behind them watching them cheering them on. And they did a pretty amazing job. And some of the questions were very tough and I included them in the presentation. I wanted to see maybe if we could get some of these right. So 204, 10, 17, ones they had in whiteboard, they would have to figure it out. Brady, what is that? Very good. And I won't, I won't call any further. Things are, so we had different problems like this. The problems were very challenging. The kids have the math skills to solve them. They just played that. It was, it was pretty awesome. So I'm going to click through just some of them. So they had to find the add in. Track. And do a word problem. What's also a fun one? 22, 10, 14, 1. 10, 4, 1. You're right. As we had this, where they had to balance the equation, meaning they had to figure out the one side before they could figure out the other side. So as you see, the problems were pretty challenging. Like I said, everyone rose to the occasion. And then here they are shaking hands after the competition. Drum roll, please. Hand up again and we could give you a round of applause. They're all proud of them. I just wanted to come so you could see some of the things that they're learning in second grade. They not only were practicing math, but the skills, social skills, how to be a good winner, how to be a good loser, you know, be a good sport. How to behave under pressure. That's a tough one. They, they did amazing and just want to say thank you for letting us come here tonight. Thank you to the parents for bringing them. And I hope you enjoyed it. We are planning on doing a spelling bee in May, so stay tuned for another discussion. Thank you. We appreciate it.
Mrs. Simmons, could we maybe have you, our final four come down for a picture with this is Gina and this is Ray. See, I could use putting on there something cool to look at related to math.
Where do you want to stand?
Maybe in front of the. There we go.
That was exciting. I hope the spelling bee can come back. Maybe we can have the final like here. Well, thank you for sharing that with us. That was awesome. Next, we have our community nations. We have anybody's. We have anyone for Title VI. Any updates?
I can tell you that this after, in a couple hours, we are, not a couple hours, a couple days, yeah. We will be presenting a recommendation for a each Title VI director. Be appointed. I had the opportunity to interview him. He is excited. He is ready to go and I think he will really be a great addition. I can also tell you that Mr. Dudek, this is Gina Chee, Mrs. Smith have been working as well as this is Ms. Red Eye, Sheila Red Eye has been working very hard to make sure that we're meeting all of the objectives and requirements for Title VI. And there's a lot coming up that is going to be happening in the district over the next several weeks and couple months.
Okay. And we'll move on to central office message. Karen, I want to start with you.
All right. I have a couple things. Actually, it's all about food services tonight. I've been applying for several different grants with food service areas. I created this thing in my head, Farmer's School and beyond. So one of them is a Farmer's School grant. There's a bunch of different ones that we had kind of talked about a couple of weeks ago. But I received one of them for $11,964 that we can, it's specific to purchase local foods from local farmers. So we hook it up, we got way out pretty soon and any other local farmers that are on the list that we can purchase their goods to use in our cafeterias. So that was pretty cool. And then another one that I want is a training for our wellness team to attend Shelburne Farms in Vermont. It's a Northeast Farm School grant. So we'll have several team members attending that three, four day session in Vermont at the end of June. And then I'm also applying for four different pieces of equipment that's due on Friday. So working on that one. And other than that, it's same old, same old.
Okay, thank you.
This is Gina E. Jean. We had a pre-K family engagement night last week and I just want to thank our OT and speech department for offering this event. All of our pre-K teachers were in attendance with our families as well, but the focus was on language and fine water skills, particularly for four-year-olds. They had some amazing activities. They were really hands-on and really creative. The kids were really getting into it. We've started our summer programming planning. Tomorrow we have a meeting of principals and our directors to plan STEAM camp, adventure camp, and both summer programings for Prospect and Seneca. And we're also in the process, Penny's been doing amazing God with Summer PD for staff, putting that up. We have pretty much an entire course catalog created already for all of our offerings to meet staff's individual needs for what they need for professional development. She created a survey to solicit input. We've gotten a lot of input. We were able to create a nice course catalog from that.
Thank you. All right, we'll move on to our board message. I want to start with you.
Well, this one's sort of difficult in that we had another, this country had another tragedy. A real long time ago. We didn't, we weren't good at dates. The Houdini and Shaun. When our when our people were grieving, there was a process that we went and when my father died, I used this, pardon, say the whole thing. But our, our country needs this right now. And Mohawk Chief Jake Swan, unfortunately, he couldn't complete his dream, but he wanted to have, it's referred to as a condolence. And he wanted to have a condolence for the entire United States down, down near the central part of the country by the Mississippi, but unfortunately, Jake passed. And what it is, it's like how, how we grieve and then the, the need for each other and that strength, we, we say that we would go to those who suffered or suffering and that we would mingle our tears and that we would be there for them. And there's a part in it where when, when we're going through that, when we're grieving, it's really hard to see clearly. It's really hard to speak. And it's really difficult to hear. And in our process, we want to be able to breathe and acknowledge every, every day. And when you're grieving, you cry real easy. And so there's the idea of tears. And they come real easy. And what they did back then was they took the skin of a pond and wiped the tears from those that were grieving from that. And then they took the eagle feather, a little thistle, and they cleaned the ears so that they could hear again. And it was so that they could see, I had to go back a little bit, so they could see the sunrise. We say got weakened. We have to be able to see that every day when you're, when you're grieving, it's difficult to greet the new day. And then the hearing again is to hear the sounds of the morning. And then it's real hard to speak. Those of you that have been through this process, it feels like there's a water right here. And it's difficult to get the words out. They took clear water. We still do this. There's a couple sites here where there's that real clear cold water. And we drink it, sort of removes that, that bond. And all of that is done so that we can return to, I guess, a normal condition or a normal state. And that you can speak clearly to the people again here and see, see the new day. But that's a process we went through. I personally went through that one time, not in regard to my family, but a situation. And if there's a message for you today, we are grieving. I'm having a hard time talking because the country, we have to come back together again. We have to be able to relate to one another. We have to be able to support one another. We have to have each other's back. And that's what that whole process was, was to reestablish back to normalcy. But it was really interesting. The first time I heard that we would, that the people would come and they would, it was to mingle our tears, that we would cry together. And hopefully somehow through that process, we would pull everyone back to where we should be. And so there's a message of it after that to all of us here tonight. And if the ears of the country are listening, they should listen to that process and what the Houdini and Shaun have always done. That's an ancient, ancient, ancient process. And it's still done today and it's an amazing thing when they went through that, again, not while my father, but a different situation. I could feel and live. I felt everyone's presence. So let's hang together. We'll get through this. But this ugliness has got to stop. It simply has to stop. There's no need for that. So I offer that to you and with a good mind, find it helpful.
Well, sometimes it's always hard to follow flip on stuff. I just wanted the same thing. He took a lot of what I was going to talk about is just the, the thoughts of what happened down south. And with that, so just think about the person next year and the, the whole stuff for the rest of the year. I mean, you look at the last end of this and we're, we're on that final lap of the year. The home stretch and just focus on being positive and, you know, there's those little things. I mean, being teachers and everything else out there, I mean, nobody's really doing it for the pay or the recognition, but it's always those, those moments you can have with kids. And I mean, I remember when I was a kid, kid having some of those moments and I know there's a lot of teachers out there that, you know, and you do have that moment as we have before. And just, you know, spend the last quarter of the year trying to get as many of those positives as possible. Now that the snow's melting and the warm weather is out there and, you know, be able to enjoy that process along with everything else. So that was just the, the thing, best way.
As unfortunate as it is that we have to have these issues, for me, I always think of how grateful I am that this district is so committed to safety. I wish that every district could have what we have in schools. Outside of that, we got spring break coming and I hope everybody has an enjoyable break.
Thank you. Dale.
Yeah, Flip, thanks for that message. That was very, you know, very nice. And we do have to come back together as a nation. We have to, you know, take a look at some of our laws and our policies and put some money into mental health because that's, that's where it all stems right now is, you know, you know, if, if, if it wasn't God, it'd be something else. I mean, find different ways of creating harm and destruction. Mental health is a key, you know, education. But we do have to come back together as a, as a country. Yeah, a couple more days of spring break. Yahoo. So everybody enjoy. Thank you.
Thank you. Carrie.
Yeah, I'm having trouble focusing. I have a scroll running in front of me right here. My computer isn't loading tonight, so I forgot what I was going to talk about tonight. This is frustrating. Sorry. Yeah. I'll just normally what I say every time, you know, I want to thank all our staff, all of our teachers, support staffs, everybody. You know, you guys are doing an awesome job and it doesn't go unnoticed. We see the work every day. We hear about the good work every day. You know, I can't thank you enough. And again, to thank my colleagues up here for everything that we do, everything you guys do, you know. It's really all I got. I'm still trying to figure this thing out. I'm about to throw it away.
Thank you, Carrie. Yes, thanks for that message. It was very heartfelt and inspiring. And it is true, you know, how, how do we come together, moving people of the nation of unity? Just don't forget to listen to people because you know, we listen and try to embrace and think about what other people are going through. There might be somebody out there that can step in and help and say, this person, this person needs you and sometimes I think we just listen to what people say and just, oh, they're just talking. They don't really mean it, but sometimes you really have to look at the person and understand what, what maybe they're going through and not being afraid to say, hey, or reaching out to somebody, especially for you kids here. You think you have a friend or colleague that needs help, don't be afraid to reach out to an adult or grownups and say, maybe you could talk to so and so because they might need it. Maybe that's all it takes is just one person to care and that they know that they care. And unfortunately, you know, the mental health issue, like you said, Dale, it's huge and it's one of our focus too. How do we get more help into the school? How do we get more psychologists? How do we get more social workers to work with kids and families in our community? I mean, it's tough. It's a tough time to live. And it's scary. It's like Brad had alluded to, thank God we do focus on security. You don't ever want to have to be there, but unfortunately, this is the times that we live in and we do focus on security and we want to make sure we keep our kids safe, both physically and emotionally. So again, it takes a village, everyone to raise a kid and and it doesn't matter if it's my kid or your kid. If I see a kid that's struggling, I want to help. And hopefully that's the message that I want to deliver is that we're all here to help however we can. And again, if there is ideas, I don't care if it's a student, if it's a teacher, an administrator, a community member, let us know what they are because we can't help and if we don't know. And we're, we try to, I like to think we're more of an outside the box thinker, kind of a board where people say, you can't do that. And we say, maybe we can, you know, that's why we have that spark getting, we've done over there. Because we said, what, what it? And that goes with everything. So again, don't be afraid to reach out. And, and that's kind of my message is that we want to hear. Sometimes it's great to hear the good stuff, but sometimes you need to hear the bad stuff too, so that we can focus and fix it. So that's my message. Turn it over to you.
All right. Thank you very much. Again, just to thank you to our, all the adults that worked in our buildings, no matter what their role is. Um, again, just to thank you to our, all the adults, um, that work in our buildings, uh, no matter what their role is, um. I sometimes think, and we've talked about being gracious and thankful for the things that we have, and the opportunities and options that we can provide for our students. And I would really make an argument that there aren't many districts that can do for our students and our staff what we do on a daily basis, and that is because of the people in this room and because of the people at the table up here, so thank you. Um, five years ago, we had a pretty big groundbreaking, um, ceremony for a construction project that started with, uh, the steam wing and then extended to Beth Park and Prospect. Um, we haven't really done the groundbreaking ceremonies, because really it's just been one continuous project, and we anticipate several more years of improvements to the district across the board, but I can share that today, uh, the first footer was done for the addition here at the, uh, high school complex. So, um, that is well underway, and we've seen some of the site work that has been occurring there. Are you gonna ask me if we got to dig the first footer?
Because I wasn't invited.
Well, it was just sort of a keep-going, yeah, spur of the moment, hey, do you want to jump in this thing and dig a hole? Um, so, construction is well underway, um, and we'll start to see continued improvements happening here. Um, I did want to make a note about a couple things, uh, that has been in the news recently regarding our, uh, or the state's advisory committee on indigenous mascots. Um, that committee has been charged with advising the education department on a recent decision to eliminate indigenous mascots and team names um, from school districts across the state. Um, a few days ago, members of this committee are reported to have announced that team names such as the Raiders and the Warriors must go. I just wanted to share that there has not been any formal announcements from this committee, um, or the education department, for that matter. Our district has spent the past few months gathering input from the community, we're currently working with the student government to review data from a recent student survey. This information will be presented to the school board, um, and then subsequently, uh, wrapped to the Seneca Nation of Indians over the next couple of weeks. I have reached out to the state advisory committee to get information, um, on the process for reviewing school logos and names, so I anticipate that they'll be, uh, back in contact with us shortly. So over the next couple of weeks, we will have much more of information, um, that will pull everything together that we've been working on for the past couple of months. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, with that, uh, we need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion.
Motion by Ted, second, uh, second by Flip. Are there any questions on any of the items in the consent agenda?
Yeah, I do. Karen?
Carrie.
We showed a profit in February, we kept, here, what's going on? And turn the corner, we're making money again?
Well, no, I, I wish, but that's, we got additional money, um, they gave us additional money for, um, to purchase food supplies, because some of the, the stuff is hard to get, and costs have increased, so they gave us additional money, so it's gonna be a one.
Oh, okay. Made my hopes up.
I'm sorry.
Any other question? Okay, just want to make sure. All right, then we got a motion by Ted, second by Flip, all in favor?
I, I.
Opposed, abstain, motion carried. Item A under, we have no old business, under new business, we have, um, excuse me, we have a travel process. Starting the red monster.
Page six, or, we have page six.
The John Haley separated it.
Oh. Oh, I'm sorry, okay. I didn't realize it wasn't.
We separated it, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, item G is our travel conference, uh, for John Haley to go to, uh, New London, Connecticut, March twenty-sixth, uh, through March thirty-first, so we need a motion to approve that trial.
Motion, second.
Motion by Carrie, second by Dale. All in favor?
Right, right.
Opposed, I will abstain, motion carried. Uh, there is no old business, uh, under new business, we have, um, buses that we are declaring surplus, so we need a motion to approve, um, the buses.
Motion, bust, motion.
Motion by Dale, second by, was that Brad, Flip? Are there any questions?
Yeah.
Okay.
I get it with a hundred thousand plus miles, but we've got one of them for sixty-six dollars, and we've got another one for seventy-six, eighty-six. Fifty, yeah, fifty-six, what's?
Because we went with a seven-year recycle, or replacement. And those are up, and one of them, I can't remember which one it is, but one of them has been nothing but rough old.
So, is it just more about the age of the buses as opposed to the miles in your interior?
Yep, and then we're also going to, um, push these to, uh, a company called Options International. So it will be advertised across the country instead of just like locally, um, and the results of those from the business official that I talked to, the, the prices that come back in for the vendors extremely advantageous to do it that way versus what we do locally.
Okay. So none of these are going to the bus radio? Or the bus demo or anything like that?
No.
Okay.
Unless you buy one and choose to do that. There is one thing we're gonna do with, it's not one of these buses, but, um, one twenty-six is going to be on the next, it would be on the next, uh, round of, of surplusing, but we're gonna turn it into, does everybody remember the old bookmobile?
Yes.
We're gonna turn it into the tech mobile and take it around to different locations throughout the summer and stuff like that, so once school is over, we'll rip the seats out and start doing some preliminary work on it and get it all set up and stuff, and there's the playground sites and things like that. That'll be cool.
Are there any other questions?
So we're not doing a bookmobile then?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, we can, maybe part of it is.
There'll be books in there.
Then we got a motion by Dale, second by Brad, all in favor?
I, I.
Opposed, abstaining, motion carried. And under B, we are declaring bookbub uh, some textbooks, so we need a motion to approve surplusing one of those items.
Motion.
Motion by Ted, second by Flip, are there any questions? All in favor?
I.
Opposed, abstain, motion carried. Item C is the creation of some summer positions, so we need a motion to create those positions.
Motion, second.
Motion by Dale, second by Carrie, are there any questions? All in favor?
I.
Opposed, abstain, motion carried. Item D is our SASSA MOA. So, uh, we are um, the celebrating Juneteenth, and we are remembering Columbus Day, uh, to Indigenous Peoples' Day. So we need a motion to approve the SASSA MOA.
Motion.
Motion by Carrie.
Second.
Second by Dale, are there any questions? All in favor?
I.
Opposed, abstain, motion carried. Uh, item E is our SPA MOA. And we need a motion, let me see. That's for an additional and bike program for students, uh, in the form of boys varsity indoor track and girls varsity indoor track. Motion, motion by Ted.
Second.
Second by Brad, are there any questions? All in favor?
I.
Opposed, abstain, motion carried. Item A is our personal consent agenda. So, item B, we need to approve, uh, item B A.
Motion.
Motion by Dale.
Second.
Second by Ted, are there any questions? All in favor?
I.
Opposed, abstain, motion carried. A personal action number two is our own dear Mr. Theory John is a girl volunteer, a press coach. Helping him go across, so we need a motion to approve, uh, eight C.
Motion.
Motion by Ted.
Second.
Second by Dale, are there any questions?
Yeah.
What? I had to do that. What'd you say?
Just give him into those messages.
Please do, please do. I didn't go through the interview process.
Then we've got a motion by Ted, second by Dale, all in favor?
I.
Opposed, abstain.
I guess I gotta abstain, abstain.
Okay.
And it separated it, so.
Yeah. Uh, motion carried. And then, uh, our introduction of.
Actually, you can vote for yourself.
I know, but you separated it.
But you, you still can vote for yourself, because if you voted anywhere else for yourself, you can. I separated it just in case you wanted it.
Just for the record, I have never abstained from a vote regarding myself or family in the past. This is the first time I've abstained in a vote of such, only because Janet separated it.
Oh. Do you still want to abstain?
No, the one time.
We're good.
We're already done.
We're good.
Okay.
Uh, let's see.
Take it away.
Introduce Carrie, I guess.
Yeah.
I did. Yeah, marvelous qualification, that's why I'm a volunteer.
There you go. Let's see, we, for building principals, do we have anybody here that we, I know Aaron, um, indicated that he was not able to make it our new pilot six director, but, um, we will welcome him and all of our, uh, other new warriors to the family, let me see them, thank you.
All right.
Hold on, sorry, don't you have anything to say about the first two names on that list?
Oh, the retirements? Oh, we do a big, well, yes, we will do a big, uh, we invite them back for a big celebration.
Big, should they?
But we do have a bash. And we are very sorry to see you go.
Sorry to see this name on the list.
Yes. So, we, um, well, you will be invited back, you have to come with warm mates anyway, but you'll be at the next, the big one that we have for all of our retirees.
We have Kate?
We will have Kate.
Okay.
Yes. Ambalines, are you named?
Okay.
I know. And we didn't even have faculty for my birthday, we're dying.
Not gonna say who's.
Oh, man. Well, maybe I'll listen and talk to her again, fix more holes out there.
Okay. That's why I wanted to celebrate it. Item nine is our board information and reports, uh, so again, everybody's looking forward, April third through the tenth, because that's spring break. Everybody be safe and have a great time. April twelfth will be in the Indigenous Education Committee meeting here at four thirty. Um, April eighteenth is finance at five P M. At the Assistant Superintendent for Finance Office, AKA Karen.
Board night, board meeting night two. Board meeting on the eighteenth.
Because now it's special.
Yeah.
Because I haven't advertised it yet.
So we will have a special board meeting on the eighteenth, everyone's prize.
So, that's all they have, any needs?
No, we can still do it.
Example?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Uh, April twentieth, there'll be personnel and instruction, eight A M in superintendent's office, April twenty-first and twenty-second is our musical, it's a high school auditorium. Um, and then April twenty-third is another musical at two P M at the high school auditorium. And then, uh, April twenty-fifth will be another V O E. With that, I need a motion to. Thank Carrie, who sent them that down? All in favor?
I.
Opposed, same, motion carried. Thank you, everyone, for coming.
Thanks, everyone.
Have a great spring break.